I'd like to call to order tonight's meeting of the Oak Ridge Board of Education. Would you please join me as we honor America and stand for the pledge?
Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and you may be seated. As you look at the agenda, there will be a couple of items on the agenda that we will not be doing tonight and have rescheduled for our next board meeting. So, next we'll move to the approval of the agenda. I will entertain a motion.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. McLean, seconded by Ms. Agel. Please cast your vote. This was slow last time. The last one, it was slow. Well, we believe the agenda is approved unanimously. It's just taking a little time to electronically process. While we're, there it goes, perhaps. Just by the chatter that was going on, I think everybody's gonna be real excited to be back in school tomorrow and see people, or more than one person. So, we look forward to being back in school. I know it's been a difficult time while we're out, but hopefully these events like this only occur every 20 years or so. I know it's kinda interesting, my son who lives in New Haven, Connecticut, his temperature and the amount of snow that he got there, we were much colder and much more snow here. So, you just, you just never know. Thank each of you who were able to make it tonight to our meeting. I certainly want to pause before we start, and Alan, if you would pass this on to thank the major efforts made by our maintenance department to get the parking lots clear and the sidewalks clear and everything that they did trying to get us back in school a little bit earlier. So, we appreciate that, and if you'd pass that on from the board, we appreciate it. And also to the workers for the city of Oak Ridge who've spent hours and hours and hours trying to get our roads clear. Oak Ridge, Tennessee is just not prepared for an event like this because they don't happen very often. So, we appreciate the efforts to help keep our citizens and our community safe. And also, I appreciate the work, the superintendent and his staff, and Molly, thank you. We've received a lot of great comments about the communication that the community has received based on what we're doing or what we're not doing, so that's much appreciated as well. So, we'll move from there to special reports and presentations. The first item being our good news, and Ms. Agel, we're gonna start with you first.
All right, from Willowbrook Elementary, a huge shout-out to the city of Oak Ridge for ensuring that our students, staff, and community remain safe. Recently, the city installed a stop sign in a high-traffic area in front of our campus. The Robertics Club participated in the Atomic Senate Invitational on January 13th. Students participated in the Masterpiece Alliance Challenge and did a fantastic job. Our 21st Century Program partnered with the Anderson County UT TSU Extension Office to provide the program, Yoga for Kids, for students in our after-school program. Students were fully engaged in the fun while learning about healthy, active lifestyles, and that is good news.
Ms. McLean, we'll go next to you.
Okay, I have good news from Oak Ridge High School. The girls' bowling team coached by Julianne Fowler won the district championship in only their second year in the program. The team placed second at the regional tournament and will compete in sectionals on January 12th. During the extraordinary gala at the Chamber, at the Oak Ridge Chamber of Commerce 75th Anniversary Celebration, the Oak Ridge High School Interact Club, sponsored by Allison King, received the Chamber of Commerce Extraordinary Promising Youth Award. Congratulations.
You know, I remember when the approval of the bowling team was on the agenda, we issued a challenge to them that the board would challenge them to a bowling event. They never contacted us. Now, I'm glad that they didn't because now we will refuse that challenge if they contact us after that. Well, they did. Ms. Webb.
We have good news from Robertsville Middle. Congratulations to Robertsville TSA members for being selected as Tennessee TSA Chapter of the Month. Technology Student Association is a national organization of students engaged in science, technology, engineering, and mathematics, STEM, open to students enrolled in or who have completed technology and engineering courses. TSA's membership includes over 300,000 middle and high school students in approximately 2,400 schools, spanning 46 states and territories. TSA is supported by educators, parents, and business leaders who believe in the need for a technologically literate society. Members learn through exciting competitive events, leadership opportunities, and much more. The diversity of activities makes TSA a positive experience for every student. From engineers to business managers, our alumni credit TSA with a positive influence on their lives. A huge shout-out to teachers, Dr. Burnett and Ms. Leffwitch, as well as the many parents and RMS alumni volunteers that help make our program so successful. And that's from Robertsville.
And that's just some of the good news taking place in our school district. Next, we move to recognition of Teachers of the Year, Teacher Assistance of the Year, and Principal of the Year. Dr. Bortles.
Yeah, I'll turn over to Mr. Lay and Dr. Williams to talk about that process and who those people are.
Yes, we are just pleased to announce that we have selected individuals, and we had a great list as usual, and we just wanted to take this opportunity to mention their names one more time. At Glenwood Elementary, Teacher of the Year was Kobe Sheridan. The TA of the Year was Shelley Leathers. At Jefferson Middle School, we had Jennifer Mitchell. That was the Teacher of the Year. Matt Reed was the TA of the Year. At Linden Elementary, we had Tracy Waltrip, Teacher of the Year, and Candace Salco was the Teacher Assistant of the Year. At Oak Ridge High School, we had Ms. Ashley Wagner, and she was the Teacher of the Year. They did not submit a TA. At the preschool, we had Brandy Duff as Teacher of the Year and Ruby Garcia Vasquez as the Teacher Assistant of the Year. At Robertsville Middle School, we had Catherine Venable as the Teacher of the Year and Elizabeth Horton as the Teacher Assistant of the Year. At Secret City Academy, Teacher of the Year was Linda Tucko, and the Teacher Assistant was Marina McKinley. At Willowbrook Elementary, the Teacher of the Year was Tiffany Collins, and the Teacher Assistant of the Year was Julie Coburn. And at Woodland Elementary, we had Ryan Tilly as the Teacher of the Year and Sarah Green, I'm sorry, I got that backwards, Ryan Tilly as the Teacher Assistant of the Year and Sarah Green as the Teacher of the Year. So, we had the initial voting, and basically each staff had the opportunity to do a, go through the voting process and select basically the Teacher and the Teacher Assistant of the Year, and then it comes to the district level, and then Dr. Williams, she forms the committee, and we get to vote. So, we will start with the Teacher Assistant of the Year, and that was Mrs. Elizabeth Horton from Robertsville Middle School. And we've already been to each school, and we presented a plaque in front of the staff and basically communicated that honor to them in front of their staff. Let's see. The elementary Teacher of the Year was Mrs. Tiffany Collins from Willowbrook Elementary. The Teacher of the Year at the middle school level, I'm sorry, the district teacher, I'm a district, I'm sorry, let me make sure I was communicated clearly. These are the district winners. So, our district elementary winner was Tiffany Collins from Willowbrook. Our middle school district winner is Mrs. Catherine Venable from Robertsville Middle School. And our high school Teacher of the Year, District Teacher of the Year is Mrs. Ashley Wagner. So, those were our district Teachers of the Year and TA. And then we had our Principal of the Year, okay? And I tell you, that was a tight process this year, but we are pleased to announce Mr. Nick Corrigan as the Principal of the, of the Year for Oak Ridge Schools.
At some point in time, if possible, I'd like to have those individuals come to a board meeting so we could recognize them here at a board meeting, if you could make that happen at some point in time.
I feel confident we can make that happen, sir, okay?
And Nick, we'll get all of them here and recognize you at that point as well, if that will work for you. Even though you're here now, I'd like to do it as a group, but congratulations. Okay. Scott, on my computer, it says electronic voting is in process and it's just going around and around. Is that gonna be a problem, voting? Is anybody else that's doing it? Yours was? Yours is? So, we got three out of the five that are doing that. So, it's still doing it? Sorry for the holdup. Just talk among yourselves. I figured out the problem. Dave Collodney's not here, and he has cast a spell on us. No, it's not your fault. He did it, but... Okay, we're gonna go ahead and move on then. Item C, we're gonna do at our next board meeting, so item D, Dr. Bortles, I believe that's to you.
It is, yes, and not everybody may know, and we'll have some social media buzz out there, but this is School Board Appreciation Week, so a good week for that. And I've said it before, and I think many of us here know, this, this is the best school board I know I've ever worked for, best school board in Tennessee, probably the country. Just, just an incredible group of people, day in and day out, and just so grateful to have them. Their governance and their leadership are the best. Their support for our schools and our community are amazing, and I think the best thing is how they provide an example of our number-one core value, which is students first. Every time they talk, it's always about students and what they can do for students, and just can't thank them enough for doing that. So, I'm gonna go ahead and read a proclamation from the governor, and then we can acknowledge them for their greatness here in the Oak Ridge Schools. Whereas offering an excellent public education system is an important part of helping to ensure every student can graduate high school, prepare to begin a secondary education, and/or join the workforce; and whereas school board members support and appreciate the efforts of students, educators, and administrators who diligently work towards educational success; and whereas voters in each district elect school board members to be their voice as challenges arise and subsequent decisions are made on behalf of students and their communities; and whereas we appreciate all who serve on school boards across the state and their dedication to quality public education in Tennessee. Now, therefore, Governor Lee, the State of Tennessee, do hereby proclaim January 21 through 27 as School Board Appreciation Week. So, please join me in thanking our school board for what they do for us.
Thank you, and we are very appreciative, and Dr. Bortles, appreciate the kind words. As I and my colleagues on the board will attest to, is we have met with, visited with, and seen other school boards in action, and I'm bragging here a bit, and rightly so. Our focus is on kids first. That's not always the case sometimes, and that's unfortunate, but anyone who serves on a board of education, if that's not your mission, then you shouldn't be serving on a board of education. So, thank you very much. Okay. Moving next to the public forum. Public forum is for anyone who would like to address a topic that is not on the agenda. You may address a topic that is on the agenda when it is presented. Please raise your hand to be recognized if you choose to address the board. You will have three minutes to speak. The board may or may not respond to your comments, or may, we may have the superintendent address your concerns. When you speak, please come to the podium and sign in, and then state your name and address for the board. Is there anyone who wishes to address the board at this time? Seeing no one, we will move on to the consent agenda. Do I hear a motion?
Approval.
Motion made by Ms. Agel, seconded by Ms. Webb. All those in favor of the, oh, we're gonna try electronic voting. Cast your vote. Oh, great. Motion passes unanimously. Electronics are amazing, aren't they? Okay. Next, we move to items for action. This is a first and second reading, Board Policy 2.400, Revenues. Dr. Bortles.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of Board Policy 2.400, Revenues.
Per the superintendent's recommendation, do I hear a motion?
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Webb, seconded by Ms. Agel. Dr. Bortles.
I'm gonna turn this over to Ms. Van Dyke, 'cause she has some mastery over this policy and the changes. So, Ms. Van Dyke, do you wanna explain some of those?
Absolutely. The Comptroller issued a new Internal School Funds Manual this year, and one of the things that they addressed in that manual and provided additional guidance on was approval of electronic payments. Amusingly enough, they recommend that we don't accept online payments, but they say that if the board approves it, we can do so. So, this is giving us the ability to continue to accept online payments, and then we hope that we're gonna start rolling out later this calendar year the ability to accept even more things online.
Comment your questions. Hearing none, please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item B is the extension and modification of the superintendent's contract. As you heard at our last board meeting, the process of the superintendent's evaluation has taken place. Each board member was given the opportunity and took the opportunity to evaluate the superintendent. Then, after that, each board member had the opportunity, if they chose, to meet with the superintendent and go over the evaluation. I have taken that opportunity, as I said last time, and the superintendent and I have met. His evaluation was an outstanding evaluation, and as I said at the last meeting, we're excited to be able to offer the extension to the superintendent, as by law, we can only offer a one-year extension. We wish we could do more, but by offering that one-year extension, it keeps the superintendent under contract with the board for four years. So, are there any comments before, well, I'll entertain a motion first for approval of the extension and modification.
Move for approval.
Motion made by Ms. Agel, seconded by Ms. McLean. Any comments, additional comments? I know some of you have met with the superintendent, but any additional comments at this time before we vote? Again, I would just like to say, and particularly for those listening or watching, without question, the first item on the superintendent's agenda is always to give credit to his staff here at SAB and the principals and administrative staff in school buildings for the work that they do. But as we all know, the buck stops in the superintendent's office. So, if we have someone in the position that, that makes things happen and things that buy in to provide continuing quality education for our students, that's what we want in Oak Ridge Schools, and we certainly have a person in that position, so we thank you for that. So, please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item C is FY '24 tenure status for eligible staff members. Dr. Bortles.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of FY '24 tenure status for eligible staff members.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do I hear a motion?
Second.
Motion made by Ms. McLean, seconded by Ms. Agel. Dr. Bortles.
This is just a fantastic night to give tenure here to 20 people that have earned tenure, and I'm gonna have Mr. Lay explain that in a little bit, but I think we have four, four folks out of our 20 that braved the rain to come out here tonight. But, Mr. Lay, do you wanna explain the process so everybody knows what happens?
Yes, sir. Basically, what happens is, is the employee must have worked for us for a full five years. And then basically, at the end of those five years, that person is eligible for tenure if year five and year four, they score a Level IV or a Level V, basically, as their LOE, LOE, okay? So, it's on the evaluation system. So, once we verify the five years of service, and they were a Level IV teacher or a Level V teacher, year four, year five, then we send out a notice to the principal. The principal signs off, yes, this person is a quality educator, effective, and they should earn tenure. And then basically, we bring that recommendation to Dr. Bortles, and he brings it before the board.
Comment your questions.
And the LOE is Level of Effectiveness, if you, anyway, on the evaluation.
Well, I will point this out, because there was a time, and I can bear witness to this, that each member receiving tenure was asked to come to the microphone and make a comment. Now, if you're one of those people coming to the microphone and making a comment, everything you say is gonna be positive, because we haven't voted yet. Would you not think?
I agree 100% because I, myself, was expected to come to the podium and make a comment, but we're trying to improve attendance here, so you can determine if that's possible.
Well, no, and my point being, I'm not gonna ask them to do that, but we will now take a vote. You've heard the motion on the floor. Please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. But what I would like for you to do, if you would do this for us, since we've got millions... watching, if you don't mind, if you'd come to the microphone, just introduce yourself and tell us the school that you teach. If you would do that, I would be greatly appreciative.
Good evening, I'm Jonathan.
Wait, excuse me, Mr. Corrigan. Come on up.
Thought I was going to slide over the radar. I'll be glad to let you go first.
Good evening, Board. I'm Jonathan Schoolcraft. I'm a math teacher at Oak Ridge High School.
And don't sit down yet, though. Just kind of move to the side. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Michelle Sanders. I taught for four years at Jefferson Middle, seventh grade math, and I'm at the high school this year, teaching high school math.
Thank you.
Hi, Stephanie Slusson. I'm seventh grade science at Robertsville Middle School.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Gigi Nave. I now teach kindergarten at Willowbrook Elementary.
Hello, everyone. I'm Nick Corrigan, currently the principal at Robertsville Middle School.
And if you would, join me in congratulating these individuals.
Well, I know that all of the board is aware, I'm fairly certain that all of the staff are aware, but the millions of the public may not know that the requirement to score a four or a five on the assessment is either above average or superior. So these folks have exceeded the bar. Thank you.
I just turned off my microphone. If anybody that also granted tenure is listening, they won't hear me. So I want you to go back. When we see some of your colleagues that were granted tenure, tell them that the board chairman was really upset. And they didn't get granted tenure.
Thank you for being here tonight. And you can leave if you'd like to, or you're welcome to stay. Next, we move to item D, 2025-2026 District School Calendar. Dr. Bortles.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the 25-26 District School Calendar.
Per the superintendent's recommendation, do I hear a motion? Motion made by Ms. McLean, seconded by Ms. Webb.
I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Lay. You want to describe this, Mr. Lay?
Before you do that, that was a joke. Yeah, that was a joke. Mr. Lay?
Yes, sir. The process this year to basically create the 25-26 calendar was similar to years of what we've done in the past. Each school sends a representative, we form a committee. That committee spends approximately two weeks asking staff, what would you like to, what would be your preference or suggestions for the school calendar? We meet once again with those suggestions. We send out surveys so that everyone can vote. This year, the suggestions were a little bit lean, as we have seen the past couple of years, which leads me to believe that, that we have a calendar that a very high percentage of our staff were pleased with. The one question that we really had, there are some givens, we know. We know that staff, they want a full two weeks during the winter break. They don't want to start midweek because you lose a week in there. We know that the Wednesday prior to the Thanksgiving holiday is very important to our staff. We know that the Mondays after a, after fall break, winter break, and spring break, a PD day, a data day, a work day, whatever you want to call that, for teachers to have in their rooms to prepare for students, we know that that is wanted. We know the staff wants our fall break and spring breaks to align with basically surrounding school systems. So if they have children in those school systems, those are our givens. The new, the new suggestion this year was, could we possibly reduce our fall break to a one-week break, then have a full week off during the week of Thanksgiving? So we put on the survey and put it out there, and basically, I think 17% supported that. I will tell you that in looking at that, if that would have been a, let's say 90% wanted that, it really did upset the balance of our calendar. It was going to take some work to make that really fit. So basically, the calendar before you really mirrors the calendar that we have used last year, this year, and actually will take place next year. Any other specific questions on the calendar?
Ms. Agel.
Well, my only thought on it was that it might have made sense to make spring break one week later, so that you could kind of combine it with the Good Friday holiday, and given families off the Easter weekend, with, you know, the two weeks including Easter weekend. But I also fully understand that there is an effort to balance the different grading periods, and that third grading period is already the longest one, so bumping it would have exacerbated that problem.
Yes, and we did actually do that on paper, and basically, we saw that we were creating a larger third nine weeks in comparison to the fourth nine weeks. But it would have, but the benefit would have been, students would have basically completed this school year a day earlier than what they're going to, so we saw that. But, but when we, when we work with staff, maintaining a balance of our grading periods is very important, so that's why we kept it where it sits.
Ms. Webb.
And thank you for explaining the extra Monday, because I think that gets a lot of questions, but it makes sense that it's a teacher preference. So, thank you for that.
You know, it does, and teachers, I mean, we have heard consistently, and we always hear it after a break. We heard it after winter break, we will hear it after spring break. It is appreciated. You think about, you go from a two-week break, for those that don't teach intercession, then all of a sudden, it's Monday morning, and the students are there to have that day to prepare. And then also, that's when we do our data meetings, which is equally important, too, to see how students perform that prior nine weeks. And that's very important for us to move forward to see what we need to do differently. So it's extremely beneficial. Maybe it may not be a parent preference, but it works very well for our staff.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, the motion on the floor is approval of the 2025-2026 District School Calendar. Please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next item E is the purchase and installation of access control equipment at Glenwood Elementary. Dr. Bortles.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the purchase and installation of access control equipment at Glenwood Elementary in the amount of $64,331.23.
Per the superintendent's recommendation, do I hear a motion?
Move for approval.
Motion made by Ms. Agel, seconded by Ms. McLean. Dr. Bortles.
As you can see from the memo there, this equipment will upgrade the access controls for Glenwood Elementary School, allowing all classroom areas to be secured or entered with a card reader access. As it says there, we're going to kind of use this as a test pilot to make sure it works well. Our hope would then be, in years to come, we would do a school every year to get that same kind of card access in every building. And you can see there, we're using the funding from the 2024 Public School Security Grant to fund this project.
Comment your questions.
And I will add one comment. If we would be fortunate enough to earn another COPS grant, then perhaps we could do four or five schools in a year, and hopefully, over the next couple of years, three of the most have all schools done, if this works that well.
Please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item F is the purchase and installation of a dish machine at the Oak Ridge Preschool. Dr. Bortles.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the purchase and installation of a dish machine at Oak Ridge Preschool in the amount of $37,874.06.
Per the superintendent's recommendation, do I hear a motion? Motion made by Ms. Webb, seconded by Ms. Agel. Dr. Bortles.
The equipment will improve and expand the capability of food service operations at the preschool. Bids were advertised in accordance with state guidelines, and these funds are made available from the Food Service Capital Equipment Fund.
Comment your questions. Since I remember on our visit there, this was one of the items that we talked about, that you hope to get that kitchen facility where it would be more accessible for food service, and obviously, if you're going to do that, you've got to have a place to wash the dishes as well. Makes sense. So this is a step in making that happen. Please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item G, Oak Ridge High School Navy Junior ROTC Field Trip to Norfolk, Virginia. Dr. Bortles.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of ORHS NJROTC Field Trip to Norfolk, Virginia to familiarize cadets to Navy and Marine career opportunities.
Per the superintendent's recommendation, do I hear a motion?
Move for approval.
Motion made by Ms. Agel, seconded by Ms. McLean. Dr. Bortles.
We don't have chief with us here tonight, but I'm sure he would love to explain this activity. It's taking place over the spring break, and I think you probably noticed, they're staying, their hotel name is the Naval Sea Cadet Barracks on Base, so this will be quite an experience, I think, for this group.
Yeah, I noticed that right off, thinking the same thing, that this will be a good eye-opening experience for them in many ways. Comment your questions. Please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item H is the Oak Ridge High School New Club Pickleball. Dr. Bortles.
I recommend approval of new club pickleball at Oak Ridge High School.
Per the superintendent's recommendation, do I hear a motion? Motion made by Ms. Webb, seconded by Ms. McLean. Dr. Bortles.
And as it says there, they just want to introduce this organized recreational sport into the community of Oak Ridge High School, so it's spreading everywhere, pickleball
Get ready for interscholastic pickleball. Comment your questions. Please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. The next two items, we're going to deal with two new clubs at Glenwood. The first one is called Young Men of Measure. Dr. Bortles.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the new club, Young Men of Measure, at Glenwood Elementary School.
Per the superintendent's recommendation, do I hear a motion?
Second.
Motion made by Ms. McLean, seconded by Ms. Agel. Dr. Bortles.
I'll read through what we have here for the agenda item. We do have our sponsor in the audience, but, and the board also saw this in action at Glenwood. Young Men of Measure is a club designed to teach students what it means to be a quality citizen. Topics will include etiquette, bullying, courage, resilience, work ethic, confidence, sportsmanship, putting others first, manners, positive body image, and being healthy. The activities will involve students learning key skills in pursuit of becoming young leaders, like tying a tie, shaking hands, eye contact, community service, etiquette, and more. And again, we saw a great example of this when we went and did the Glenwood Elementary visit, and I can't wait to see where they end up throughout the year.
Mr. Hendricks, do you have any comments you'd like to make, or you want to come up? Any questions of him? We did those. You said you'd get to see it in operation. Any comments you want to make?
Please prove it.
Wait, wait. Microphone, microphone.
Really excited about it. For right now, it's just for third graders, but we plan to try to maybe open it up to fourth and maybe some second graders in the future. We're starting very small, but hopefully, growing it to be a little bit bigger and bigger deal each year, where we can bring in some stakeholders to the community, some business leaders just to come in and talk about professionalism and being a young man. We also have a sister club, Young Women of Wonder, which I'm sure will come up next. So we're going to try to make this spread throughout, hopefully, the whole school, but for now, a very small start.
I noticed, I thought back when we were at Glenwood, and the Young Men of Measure were there greeting us as we came in, I thought, took me back to my days teaching civics. One of the things we did was an exercise where you had to, made a big circle in the room, actually, two circles, one on the inside, one going one way and one going the other way, and you had to walk around the circle and shake hands, just shake hands. And the difficulty that students had, just shaking somebody's hand and looking them in the eye when they did that. So this is a great opportunity for these young people, and wish you success with that.
Thank you very much.
Comments from anyone? Thank you.
Thank you.
Please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. So from there, we'll move to the Glenwood New Club, Young Women of Wonder. Dr. Bortles.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the new club, Young Women of Wonder, at Glenwood Elementary School.
Per the superintendent's recommendation, do I hear a motion? Motion made by Ms. Webb, seconded by Ms. McLean. Dr. Bortles.
This club's very, very similar, but designed to teach students how to grow in their relationships with others and with themselves. Topics will include goal setting, vision boards, showing gratitude, and having a growth mindset. Some of their activities with the students will learn key skills in pursuit of becoming a young leader, such as setting goals for themselves, building a vision board, and learning how to work with others.
Comment your questions. Hearing none, please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item K, FY '23 District Audit. Dr. Bortles.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of FY '23 District Audit.
Per the superintendent's recommendation, do I hear a motion?
Move for approval.
Motion made by Ms. Agel, seconded by Ms. McLean. Dr. Bortles.
Well, we'll end tonight's meeting with some great news. It's always nice to have a great audit, but I'm going to turn to Ms. Van Dyke, but before I let her go, just a huge thank you to her and her team, and all the people that are involved in getting a clean, clear audit like this, so just, just a big thank you for, for her team. So, Ms. Van Dyke, you want to give us any highlights from the audit?
Absolutely. Attached to the audit, well, not the document itself, but there was a second document that had a letter from our auditor. He normally tries to come and do a presentation, but he wrote this up because he was unable to attend, and so I'll just give you a couple of the highlights. I'm not going to read the whole thing. It says on pages 13 through 16, is the independent auditor's report. We issued an unmodified opinion of the financial statements. This is the highest level of assurance we can provide on the financial statements. That is not a reflection on the Board of Education's financial well-being, but instead on the accuracy and completeness of the financial statements and notes. On pages 154 to 155 is the independent auditor's report on internal control over financial reporting. We are happy to report that we noted no significant deficiencies or significant noncompliance to report in this letter. And on pages 156 through 157 is the independent auditor's report on compliance for each major program. This is our grants, and then it goes to the next page, sorry. In our opinion, the schools complied in all material respects with the types of compliance requirements referred to above, and could have a direct and material impact, or, I'm sorry, material effect on each of its major federal programs for the year ended June 30th, 2023. And I put on each of your stations, except for Ms. McLean, I gave you yours earlier, the Bible here, that if you go to the very back, page 149, it actually is a little more condensed, and there's a bunch of checkboxes that say no, there were no findings or deficiencies, so clean audit this year.
Comment your questions from the board. Please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously, and as Dr. Bortles said, this is always good news, and I know you're pleased with your staff, and we're pleased with you and your staff, and thank you for the hard work.
I will share that with them. I have an amazing, amazing staff, so couldn't do it without them.
Yes, thank you. Moving on to items for information, any questions regarding the financial report? Moving to items for discussion, any old business, new business, communications, members of the Board of Education? Members of the Board of Education were the first guests on our television program, Focus on Education. Ms. Webb has taken the month of February, and she'll be hosting the show in February. Dr. Hartman has taken March. So, Ms. Agel and Ms. McLean, that leaves you the remaining two months. Y'all can flip a coin or do whatever you'd like to do, but
I'll take April.
Thank you. Our calendar. We will have a board visit on 1/31. That's next Wednesday. That's a rescheduled visit that was supposed to be today, was rescheduled at Woodland, beginning at 7:45. On February the 7th, we will be visiting Robertsville, beginning at 7:00. On February the 20th, there will be a joint meeting between this board and the Oak Ridge City Council here at SAB, beginning at 5:00 PM. On February the 21st, the board will be visiting Secret City Academy, beginning at 7:30. And on February 26th will be our next regular scheduled board meeting. And then, all the other things that are happening at all of our schools throughout the district until that time, available for board visits and attending activities that are taking place at that time. Dr. Borchers, anything that we have forgotten or left out?
Just excited to have our students back, and as you saw, our staff getting reacquainted again with all of them and our parents, and I think we're going to be rejuvenated here going into our third quarter.
And Scott, thank you for being here and getting us online. Melissa, thank you for keeping us online tonight, and thank again each of you all for being here tonight and being with us. Stay safe, look forward to back in school tomorrow, and we stand adjourned.